Good evening, I'm LeAnn Blau, the Riverside Township Clerk. Welcome to the 148th Annual Meeting of Riverside Township. If you have not done so already, please sign in on the attendance sheet and allow us to verify your right to vote. Any registered voter of the township has the right to vote on matters at this annual meeting. Can all, everyone rise please? Michael Dropka, can you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need to elect a moderator. The moderator of this meeting is elected from among the electors present. It is customary to award an honorarium to the moderator of the annual township meeting. What is your pleasure regarding an honorarium?
I make a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the honorarium.
The motion was made by Michael Dropka, seconded by Mary Robb Clark. Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none. There are nominations for moderator of the 148th Annual Meeting of Riverside Township.
I nominate Ann Kobinski.
I second.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Say nay. Hearing none. Ann, you can take over the meeting. Thank you.
Oh, I have to swear you in.
Yes.
I apologize, I forgot about that. I just wanted to get out of here, so.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and partially.
I will faithfully and partially.
Discharge the duties of moderator.
Discharge the duties of moderator.
Of the township meeting.
Of the township meeting.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, my dear.
Okay, before we proceed, unless there simply has a strong objection, I'd like to set just a couple of rules of procedure. First of all, this is the annual meeting of electors of Riverside Township, so only a registered voter of Riverside Township can make a motion or second a motion at this meeting. If you wish to make a motion or second it, please stand and state your name for the record. Secondly, for the discussion portion of any question or any motion, if anyone wishes to speak, please stand, again, state your name for the record, and identify if you are a Riverside Township resident, or whether you are unrelated to Riverside Township. Discussion in response to any motion should be no more than three minutes. Okay. If you have an agenda, the next item is approval of minutes for the last town meeting. Did everyone receive a copy of the minutes?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there, that was Mary Robb Clark.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Tim Hylenbach. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, we did have a second. Oh, correct, I'm sorry. Is there any discussion on the minutes? No discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved as published. We have one item of new business at this meeting, which is a resolution that has been presented to the township. I will, it's not very long, so I will read it, so that everyone here is aware of it. Advisory question to be considered at the annual Riverside Township meeting submitted by members of the citizens, climate lobby, and supporters at the Riverside Township meeting, April 10, 2018. Whereas voters in Riverside Township should be permitted to cast a vote and advise their elected representatives on constitutional and electoral issues using an advisory question of public policy. And whereas 60 ILCS-1/30-205 indicates the electors present at a town meeting may authorize that an advisory question of public policy be placed on the ballot at the next regularly scheduled election in the township, whereas the costs of climate change, including destabilized weather patterns, rising sea levels, extreme weather events, and other serious impacts, now pose a substantial threat to the health, prosperity, and security of America. And whereas the costs are already burdening to businesses, taxpayer municipal budgets, and families, and whereas prudent action now would be far less costly than the consequences of delayed response, and will create a more stable business environment for our nation, now therefore be ordained by the electors of Riverside Township, assembled at the 2016 Township Meeting of Riverside Township, Cook County, that it is hereby directed that the following advisory question of public policy be placed on the ballot at the next regularly scheduled election in the township, and that the township board certify the question to the proper election officials. Quote, "Shall our representatives and senators in the U.S. Congress sponsor and/or support measures that will acknowledge the serious threat posed by climate change and reduce greenhouse gas emissions in a clear, transparent, and effective way?" Question mark, end of quote. Do we have a motion to adopt that resolution? Yes, I believe. Judy?
On the paragraph before the last, it says the electors of Riverside Township assembled at the 2016 Township Meeting, it's not going to be today.
Oh.
That's a typo.
Yeah, and I didn't, yeah, it should be 18, of course.
That's the main reason I object to this, is because when they gave this, presented this at our last meeting, there were several typos in it, and they had 23 people.
Wait, wait.
You should do a motion, you have a motion.
Yeah, yeah, let's, is there a motion? And, yeah. Do we have a motion to adopt this resolution?
I move that the.
I'm sorry, your name, please?
Mary Cray.
Okay, C.R.A.Y.
Yes, I am, yeah. And I move that we accept the show our representatives and senators in the U.S. Congress sponsor and/or support measures that will acknowledge a serious threat posed by climate change and reduce greenhouse gas emissions in a clear, transparent, and effective way. I move that we accept that.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Your name, please?
Benjamin Van Horn.
V-A-N-H-O-R-N?
H-O-R-N.
Two, okay, you got that, LeAnn? Okay, you makes the second, and are you from Riverside Township?
Yes.
Okay, good, okay. Is there any discussion on the motion?
First of, oh, come here. First of all, you know, I objected to this at our meeting that was in March, that there were typos in the original thing that they presented us, and now here's another typo. Out of the 23 people that signed that petition, only 15 were eligible to vote on this, and that one of the 23 persons caught the typo. So I questioned this, and then I'm not exactly really sure what you mean, and what the goal of this resolution is.
Would you care to answer that?
Yeah, it's basically that we want.
Would you go over the mine, please?
Sure.
And could you try to limit your time to three minutes, please?
Yes, I can. And basically, this is just so that our senators and representatives at least discuss these issues that are coming up, and basically.
This is kind of a multi-solving, co-benefits, you know, kind of program where villages and so forth that vote on this, and there are villages that have already passed it.
True.
The villages that I know of so far are Berwin, Proviso, Orland, and actually today it's being presented at Homer Glen Lyons, Yorktown, today. And basically, this isn't saying that they have to do anything specific, but that they have to discuss this, and, and, and the advantages are to health, more stability for agricultural systems, better water quality, better community connections. We're all connected in our communities here, you know, so what happens to one is going to influence what happens to another, and this will lead to less extreme weather and climate, less wildfires and climate change, less spending on disaster relief, and I have about six statements from faith groups that also support this, so.
Is this for Riverside Township?
I don't know. For example, the Vatican, the Evangelical Climate Initiative, the National Association of Evangelicals, the Episcopal Church, Southern Baptists, Dalai Lama, you know, and so this is, this is really not something that says you've got to do this, this, and this. It's saying you have to discuss it, and I think this should be on our, our voting, you know, when, when we get to vote in November, that Riverside accepts this and so forth. And, you know, we're not a particularly very large town, but, you know, if you've ever read the book, If Mayors Could Rule the World, and, and very small, you know, villages are doing a whole lot of things that affect another village. Did you have a question?
I have one.
Oh.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay. Any other presenters? No? Okay, we'll take the vote on that. Now, you must be a resident of Riverside Township to vote, so I have to believe that whoever is here is, is in fact a resident.
There's an exception of one lady. Yeah, right here. Her name is, so, not related to anything with Riverside.
Okay, so you won't be, be voting?
Well, obviously not.
Okay. And, and, okay, two people. Okay, so, all in favor of the resolution? Yep. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight, is that correctly, LeAnn, do you think? Did you count those? Eight? Oh, wait.
Yes.
Okay.
Wait, let's re-count it.
Okay. Oh, I didn't see this lady.
Hold on, I'm sorry.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine. Nine, yeah, nine, okay. Opposed? One.
Can you read the question?
Okay, I'm sorry, but the resolution does not pass.
Yeah.
Okay, the next order of business are township reports. The first report will be the financial statement of the supervisor, which was, will be read by Clerk LeAnn Blau.
Um, the new thing is, it's tough to just have to, you don't do the thing anymore, just.
I just think that because that was what, why I was.
But isn't it now where you just tell them to take it, and it's just posted for everybody?
Yeah, I thought that was the case.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Unless someone wants to hear it read. Does anyone want to hear the financial report heard?
Does anybody want to see it, just me to read the entire report, or can I just go from the beginning, balance to the end of balance, and it's for everybody's review, it was up here, or does somebody want me to read the whole thing?
Um, I don't know that I have an opinion, but there are people watching from home, but it is recorded for future replays, so I'm not sure to what extent that would dictate the answer to this question.
Well, you have to be here to vote on it, but, I mean, if, it's not, is how long is it?
It's four pages, and three pages.
Oh, three pages. I think we have one and a little round the back, but is that?
No, this is the financial, the financial.
Financial report.
All right, the town fund, at the close of business on March 31st, the sum of the general account was 848,816.72. Revenues were 568,729.33. Expenses were 614,073.47. The decrease was 45,034.14. Amount of tax levied in the preceding year was 534,232. General assistance fund, at the close of business on March 31st, 2018, the sum of general assistance account was 286,342.96. Revenues were 67,825.87. Expenses were 29,594.86. The increase was 38,031.01. Amount levied, amount of tax levied in the preceding year was 62,009. The town fund, amount of public funds on hand, April 1st, 2017, was 894,168.6. The receipts from real estate tax collection was 530,345.33. Personal property replacement tax was 31,092.78. Other revenue was 3,006.1758. The interest was 2,008.4567. The net receipts was 568,729.33. The total receipts and opening balance was 1,462,890.19. Disbursements, salaries were 261,641.95. Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund was 21,103.14. Taxes by government, Medicare, unemployment was 20,323.50. Hospitalization life insurance was 15,148.86. Administration was 14,368.58. Annual audit, $8,000. Accounting was 25,123.9. Building and maintenance, building and equipment maintenance, I apologize, was 24,574.40. Education seminars and dues was 3,103.84. Insurance, general and liability, was 24,077. Legal services was 2,0646. Supplies and equipment was 8,557.97. Telephones and utilities was 11,212.07. Travel expense, 2,044.85. Programs and grants was 113,675.83. Assessor's office budget, 40,862.51. Road maintenance and expense, 16,652.80. Bridge and maintenance and expense was 475.72. The net disbursements were a total of 614,073.47. Closing balances of March 31st, 2018, was 848,816.72. Riverside Bank now account has 106,990.27. The Riverside Bank money market account has 576,419.8. The Riverside Bank certificate of deposit, one is 64,545.83, the other is 100,868.64, for a total bank balance as of March 31st, 2018, of 848,816.72. The bottom state, I, Vera Wilt, Supervisor of Riverside Township, Cook County, Illinois, being duly sworn, dispose and say the foregoing statement is correct, is a correct report for the fiscal year beginning April 1st, 2017, and ending March 31st, 2018. The next is the general assistance fund. Amount of public funds on hand as of April 1st, 2017, 248,119.5. Receipts from the real estate tax collection is 62,838.22. For food pantry donations is 4,401.40. Interest earned, 586.25. Net receipts being 67,825.87. Total receipts and opening balance is 315,937.82. Disbursements, relief orders paid, 20,825.25. Insurance, 20,015. Equipment, 611.43. Education dues, meetings, 250. Food pantry purchases, 4,291.26. Food pantry expense, 1,601.92. Net disbursements of 29,594.86. Closing balances, March 31st, 2018, are 286,342.96. Riverside Bank now account, 85,818. Riverside food pantry account, 5,233.98. Riverside Bank certificate of deposit, 50,923.79. Riverside money market account, 144,278.19. Total bank balances of March 31st, 2018, 286,286,342.96. Again, I, Vera Wilt, Supervisor of Riverside Township, Cook County, Illinois, being duly sworn, dispose and say the foregoing statement is a correct report of the fiscal year beginning April 1st, 2017, and ending March 31st, 2018.
Thank you, LeAnn. Is there a motion to accept the financial statement of the supervisor?
Yeah, yeah, which? Make the motion to accept it?
Is there a second?
I second.
And your name, sir?
James Hylenbach.
James Hylenbach? Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved, accepted. Okay, next we have the report of the township supervisor.
Um, I'm just gonna give you an all, you're not gonna give the whole.
Supervisor, though?
Pardon?
Is there, are you giving a report there?
Do you want me to give it? I mean, there's a written report, I mean, do you want to?
You're, you're on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, I went out of turn.
That's okay.
That's okay.
Yeah, sure.
Be right, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Good evening. So the newly elected township officials took office on May 15th, 2017. New Supervisor Vera Wilt met with retiring Supervisor Richard P. Tusher on the statutory date of taking office to change signers on the various bank accounts, as only the supervisor is by law authorized to sign checks and effectuate any financial transactions when approved by the Township Board of Trustees. One CD account was closed upon maturity and the money moved to another bank because the surrendering bank would not change signers, demanding documents that apply to businesses but not to government. All other matters of transition went smoothly. The financial report presented separately shows the township to be in sound financial condition. Tax revenues are received periodically throughout the year by electronic transfer from the county treasurer, and much of the revenue comes in very late in the fiscal year. For that reason, it is good that there are reserves created by fiscal responsibility, and no borrowing is necessary. The following are some of the township, Riverside Township services provided over the course of the year to the community. General assistance, this is a key responsibility of the township, and is managed in strict confidence by the supervisor. This assistance is provided in monthly flat grants upon qualifying application, including an interview and examination of the facts. The recipient must continue to meet with the supervisor monthly, and to report on job searches, changes in circumstance, and other matters impacting income and eligibility. Emergency assistance, this assistance is only available one time per year, and it requires application and not qualifying for general assistance benefits. Emergency assistance, as the name suggests, is used for critical situations, such as to avoid eviction, to restart disconnected utilities, or other life or health threatening circumstances. It is paid directly to the vendor and not to the resident. The assessor reports separately to this meeting, but those services are also at the core of township responsibilities. The food pantry is open to any resident of the township, proof of residency is required, who needs the help, no questions asked. Once per month, two tote bags of non-perishable items are available for pickup during business hours. Recipients are asked to call at least one hour before pickup because we need to have enough prepared bags brought to the office. Our actual pantry is too small to allow people to shop for their own goods, but we make sure that each bag contains a balanced diet, including proteins, vegetables, fruits, starches, et cetera. We also try to include at least one item of paper goods, such as toilet paper, facial tissues, and/or paper towels. Many of the supplies come from the generous donations of residents, students, and local organizations, but we also purchase food to supplement the donations. Approximately 80 households partook in this benefit at one time or another this past year. Many thanks to the youth of Hauser Junior High and the individual donors for their generosity. We also thank Patty Chiops, a regular volunteer who organizes the goods and packs the bags. Holiday meals are made available at Thanksgiving and Christmas, when we offer turkey or ham respectively with the trimmings. Forty-one dinners were distributed at Thanksgiving and 35 at Christmas. The nurse's closet serves many residents by lending durable medical goods at no charge for temporary use up to three months. Again, this is available to township residents only, the items are donated, and people can choose the specific item that fits their needs. Exercise classes with special attention to individual needs are now offered three times per week and are attended mostly by senior residents. They are held on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at noon, no reservations are needed, just drop in. Weekly movies are shown at 12:30 PM every Thursday in Room 4, and are free service activity. Blood pressure screenings are offered for free in the town hall on the first Monday of the month, and at the North Riverside Village Hall on the first Wednesday. The State Fair bus trip was a special event offered for a nominal charge last August. Those who attended had a wonderful time on this day trip, and we hope to do a variety of trips in the future, always at a low cost, with the township subsidizing the event. Senior activities are supported and sponsored at both the town hall and in North Riverside. At the North Riverside Library, we sponsor a senior drop-in with card games and pastry every week. A presentation on the opioid crisis was a free special event with panel, with a panel of experts to enlighten the residents about what to look for, and offered resources for assistance in dealing with addiction. It was recorded by Riverside TV and is available for viewing on their website. Radio Players is a long-running program sponsored by the township, and presents programs monthly from old-time radio scripts. Admission is free. The town hall is available for meetings and other uses to community organizations, but for years, no alcohol was permitted, so some uses were limited. The town board recently lifted the ban and is developing rules and terms for such use. We envision that the building could be used for resident family parties, such as showers and small weddings. We plan to open up to this type of use soon. The mental health board evaluates and then supports various organizations. The Mental Health Board evaluates and then supports various organizations that serve the residents of the township. This group of dedicated volunteers will report separately. The township newsletter design was enhanced and it seems that the publication has increased interest in services, as several have had a recent uptick in utilization. Other services that the supervisor and staff provide are applications for Metra RTA passes, temporary handicap parking permits, voter registration and notary services. We help individuals find other resources as well. Community grants were awarded to nonprofit organizations and for public safety, educational and other appropriate purposes. The applications for these grants were revised for better understanding of the benefit to the township residents. Finally, I want to thank elected official, the elected officials who keep me on my toes with all their ideas for enhanced services. Assessor Fran Zikowicz, Clerk LeAnn Blau and Trustees Mary Robb Clark, Michael Dropka, Tim Hylandbach and Tom Luffler. My deepest gratitude to Marjorie Iniguez and Andrew Luther for keeping the office and resident services running smoothly and Bob Kelly and Keith Leese for keeping the Town Hall building clean and inviting. Thank you. Thank you, Vera. Is there a motion to accept the report of the supervisor? Okay, Mary Robb Clark, this is motion and Adam Wilt, second. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mike Dropka, I just wanna say that, uh, you know what? I, I've seen firsthand as a member of the board, uh, the great work that our supervisor has done and she should really be commended for everything that you've done in this past year. I mean, it's only been one year and it's just incredible amount of work that you've done. So congratulations and good job.
Thank you. Okay, so no other discussion? Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't know how you're aware of this or not, but the newsletter that's supposedly being mailed to the residents, not, quite a few residents don't get the mailing. And it's been known in the past that the North Riverside Post Office kind of pitches with all the mail and they don't deliver it. So, uh, I have some experience with this, uh, in the past and it should be taken up with the post office.
Okay.
And so they don't get away costs from me to mail it.
Sure, reduce it.
And bring, bring them all of that, it's not getting to the residents.
Okay, I mean, we actually had an issue. I think there've been two letters, right?
There have been two.
Two. The first one, we never got at home, but then we did get the last one, so go figure.
Thank you. Um, if you, I would really appreciate if, uh, you know, specific people, if they tell you they didn't get it, have them call us because we can pursue it that way. Uh, we discovered after the first mailing that there was a whole section of the Hollywood portion of Brookfield that is in the township that did not receive it because of the way that the mail routes are. The delivery routes don't always coincide with township orders. So we've actually, in that area, we overmailed this time to make sure that our township residents do receive it. But if you know of specific people, just have them call us so that we can keep track and come to the post office and say, hey, this area, it could be a certain area.
It's gonna be a long list.
Well, thank you. I, uh, I'm very sorry to hear that. Most of the people that I've checked with did receive it. And so, uh, if it's not coming, and I wonder, uh, sometimes in apartment buildings, they don't like to bother with, um, with bulk mail. So we will certainly, uh, follow that up. Thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that. Anything else, any other discussion? Okay, uh, so we'll take a vote on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, then the report is accepted. Next, we will have the report of the Township Clerk LeAnn Blau.
Hi, the Township Clerk is responsible for keeping the records of the township, which among other things includes drafting the minutes and all regular and special meetings. Filing such documents is required by Cook County and the state authorities. In addition, it maintains and preserves all township records, files, official documents and ordinances. Uh, also administers oaths, uh, to office holders. I wanna say it's been an action-packed year. There've been many hours of meetings with discussions and introductions to new concepts and ideas by the board. My contribution is usually to be quiet and, uh, do the minutes for these meetings, which I have to say, uh, have taken me a lot longer than they have in the last eight years that I've been the clerk. But it's, it's, it works out good. The largest undertaking was establishing some guidelines and documentations for renting the township building out for venues. There's been a concentrated effort to make constituents aware of the programs that the township offers, as Vera stated in her report. The programs were outlined and revamped quarterly in the newsletter. These programs are outlined in the newsletter that some, now we find out people are not receiving. A special thanks, uh, to Andrew for the great job he did in working on that project and revamping the newsletter. In February, trustee Clarkson Holbeck put together an excellent program regarding the opiate epidemic. It was a great collaboration between the township and the Mental Health Board and, uh, coming together to provide educational programs and outreach to the community. Trustee, uh, Clark also implemented that senior exercise program, which, uh, has taken off very well, as Vera had stated. And, um, there's, I wanted to, uh, thank Supervisor Wilt for being a driving force that keeps the, the board on track and for all of her hard work. I also like to, uh, say the, uh, the Assessor's Office is a great pride of source for our township. Fran and her staff provide quality assistance for each constituent in spite of an ever-increasing workload. And I'd also like to thank Deputy Clerk, Marjorie Iniguez and Andrew for the wonderful job they do here. And lastly, I'd like to, uh, tell everybody it's an honor to serve on a board with such caring people and a privilege to serve the Riverside Township. Thank you.
Thank you, LeAnn. Is there a motion to accept the report of the Township Clerk?
I make a motion to accept the clerk's motion of the township clerk.
To Hylandbach? Is there a second? Okay. Yes, I know, but I can't, Tom, Tom, Tom Luffler, second. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, uh, do we, uh, all in favor of accepting the report of the Township Clerk? Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. The report is accepted and thank you again, LeAnn. Next, we have the report of the Township Assessor, Fran Zikowicz.
Thank you. Uh, first I'd like to thank Supervisor Vera Wilt and the Riverside Township Board for continuing to support the services my office provides to the taxpayers of Riverside Township. So, two thousand seventeen was our reassessment year and we provided more services to more people than ever before. I've been keeping detailed records since two thousand twelve and last year exceeded by far the amount of taxpayers we serve in all areas of the responsibilities that we have at the Township Assessor's Office. I keep records on the responsibilities that I'm respons, that I hold in the, in the, um, office so that, um, I know how to better serve the community, our taxpayers, um, as time goes on. So, um, some of our primary duties include assisting our taxpayers with appeals, exemptions, certificates of error. We process permits for all the municipalities in our township and we collect, um, property transfer information. So, um, I'll just gonna go over some of the records that I keep here and, um, every year, we start out the year with exemptions. So, last year in two thousand seventeen, we filed, helped our taxpayers file four hundred and forty-four exemption applications. And, uh, last year, that number was three hundred seventy-seven. We made three hundred and eighty-seven calls to senior residents to encourage them to file their exemptions on time. And next is our permits and we are statutorily required to process permits from all municipalities, all four municipalities in Riverside Township and unincorporated Riverside Lawn. Last year, we processed one thousand three hundred sixty-eight permits, totaling twenty-four million, two hundred thirty-one thousand, five hundred, five hundred thirty-six dollars worth of work. Appeals, obviously last year, appeals was a big focus in our, um, office because it was a reassessment year and initially, the average increase in residential assessed values was eighteen percent. So we assisted one thousand one hundred seventeen taxpayers with appeals to the Assessor's Office, nine hundred and eight taxpayers with appeals to the Board of Review. So that totaled two thousand twenty-five taxpayers that we helped with just appeals. Last year, our last reassessment was in two thousand fourteen and that year, we helped six hundred seventy taxpayers. So the work doubled this year and I had the same amount of staff. So we did an amazing amount of work. We extended office hours, we worked very long hours. We worked weekends and evenings and I just have to say, I have the most dedicated staff in the world. They, we would not have been able to file this many appeals along with all the other work without the staff that I have. So, then let's move on to property transfers. Thanks to the Cook County Township Assessors Association's work, we now have access to property transfer data directly from the Illinois Department of Revenue. It took us two years to get to this point, but now we're receiving, um, really comprehensive and accurate data. We've never had this in the past. So this makes, uh, this year's information a little skewed because we've just never had this amount of data in the past. So, um, property transfers are obviously the, the, uh, the homes that sell, the commercial properties that sell, condos that sell. And we break them down in that, in those categories. So, last year, we had two hundred and seventy true market-driven residential sales from all municipalities in Riverside Township and the total of those sales was ninety-six million, six hundred twenty-six thousand, forty-six dollars. We're now breaking out condo sales now that we have all this data coming from us. We could really report, make better reporting on it. Last year, thirty seven, thirty-four condo units sold for a total of four million, two hundred ninety-eight thousand, two hundred seventy-six dollars. We had eight commercial properties sell totaling five million, four hundred eighty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. The median level of assessment was nine percent. The Cook County Assessor's Office, um, assesses residential property at ten percent, so we're pretty close to, uh, to mark, to the true assessment, uh, for the Assessor's Office. Commercial property is assessed at twenty-five percent of market value. We just don't have enough commercial property transferring to come up with a median assessment on that. So, uh, I do report on what the activity in Riverside Lawn. Last year, we had two properties transferred to the Cook County Land Bank. Prior to last year, uh, a number of properties were being sold to the, uh, to the Cook County Land Bank as part of a voluntary buyout. And it's my understanding at this point in time that we have nineteen parcels which have sold to the Cook County Land Bank. Properties that are sold to the Land Bank are not included in my sales figures. They're not considered a true market value, uh, transaction. Another area where we help our residents is with certificates of error. The law allows taxpayers to go back three years to receive refunds of any overpayment of property taxes. So most of that is due to missed exemptions. And last year, we held, uh, we filed a hundred and seventy, seventy-six certificates of error and we helped taxpayers who, who filed those certificates of error receive a hundred and forty-six thousand, twenty-seven dollars in overpaid taxes. That's twice what we did the year before, both in the amount of work and the amount of money that they're receiving back. My budget for my office is forty thousand dollars a year. I think the amount that we get back for taxpayers really pays for the amount of, for my budget in my office. So that is, when we put those figures together this year, I was just astounded. Finally, our outreach is obviously working by the amount of work that we're doing up there. Last year, our goal was to reach more residents by email, um, by using our Constant Contact program. We have eight hundred and fifty taxpayers in our regular email list. And last year, we notified them for two appeal opportunities. We notified them when the second installment property tax going out and we also notified them when the, um, when they had an opportunity to prepay their two thousand seventeen first installment. So we were, we did communicate with these people regularly, but not too much. We don't wanna flood them, but we want them to know that this is important information. We don't want them to miss out on anything. So, uh, we also conducted two property tax seminars with the Board of Review where we had about fifty-two, um, attendees. So my staff and I worked a lot last year to serve the taxpayers, um, in Riverside Township and clearly, the taxpayers of Riverside Township have come to depend on my office for the services which we provide. And as I said before, I could not possibly accomplish what I did without the help of Mary Jo Miller and Barbara Legan, my staff. They're very professional, very respectful and knowledgeable. I get compliments about them all the time. They truly go above and beyond, um, to make sure all of our taxpayers leave my office happy. So that is my report for two thousand seventeen.
Thank you. Thank you, Fran. I think you're gonna be getting a few more people calling you after this. Okay, is there a motion to accept the Township Assessor's report?
I'll motion.
Okay, a motion, uh, by Vera Wilt and second?
I'll second, Allison's second.
Allison? Is it A-L-L or A-L-Y? Okay, L-A-L-Y-S-O-N. Any discussion on the motion, on the report? None? That was pretty comprehensive, I'd say. Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much, report's accepted. Uh, one final report is the Mental Health Board. And I believe Judy Novak, who is the Secretary Treasurer of the Board, will present that.
Good evening. Some forty-five years ago, the Riverside Township approved a referendum creating a special tax, the purpose of which was to be used for support of community-based services for the mentally ill, developmentally disabled and chronically dependent citizens of Riverside Township. The Mental Health Board, seven oh eight board, was thus organized in nineteen seventy-three to plan, fund and monitor the provisions of these services. Since that time, it has supported an array of community-based, cost-effective and non-duplicated services within the township. The Mental Health Board is made up of seven members, nominated by the Township Supervisor and confirmed by the Township Board. As required by the Illinois Mental Health Act, which governs the Board's operation, members serve four-year terms without compensation of any kind. The current members' expertise in mental health services is supplemented by their experience and training in the fields of business, finance, healthcare and education. As a member of the Board, we operate under the following philosophy. The Mental Health Board of Riverside Township has the general purpose of advocating, providing and evaluating programs and services which enhance the mental health of the community of Riverside Township. The Board supports those programs which sustain and improve the well-being of individuals, their attitude toward themselves and their adjustment to the community and each other and acts as a source of mental health information and as a representative of the community at large. The Board thus works in partnership with community-based service providers to help ensure the, the implementation of this philosophy. Furthermore, as the body responsible for aiding, promoting and monitoring services necessary for a comprehensive, community-based, mental health program, the Board works closely with other local, state and federal bodies in the planning and delivery of mental health services. It uses established resources within a community and endeavors to expand services, when possible, within existing budgetary constraints. Careful planning and oversight has resulted in township-wide networking and non-duplication of services. Our sources of revenue are limited by the tax cap or the CPI, which is all that we can ask for in a levy. Services provided or funded for, by the Mental Health Board fall into three general categories. Services provided or funded for, by the Mental Health Board fall into three general categories. Mental health services, which include family counseling services, child and adolescent services, adult day treatment service, and crisis intervention. Services for the developmentally disabled, which include developmental training services, infant early intervention programming, sheltered workshop activities, job skills training programs, respite care programming, and family support services. The developmentally disabled population includes community members with mental and/or physical disabilities, autism, Down syndrome, cerebral palsy, and so forth, which may prevent the opportunity to live a normal, productive lifestyle without specialized assistance and support. We also support outpatient services to perform, to persons suffering from alcohol, abuse substance, substance abuse, or chemical dependence. Fiscal year seventeen eighteen, the Mental Health Board has funded five agencies as follows. Pillars Community Health, which is a combination of pillars and community nursing services, which had merged at the end of, or say, at the beginning of 2018, for two hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars. Helping Hand Center for the developmentally disabled, a hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. Community Support Services, forty-seven thousand, ninety dollars. UCP Segwin, twenty thousand, and way back in, ten thousand dollars. So a total of community grants and aids were awarded in the amount of five hundred and fifty, thirty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars in fiscal year seventeen The demand for mental health, developmentally disability, and substance abuse services continues to increase as more individuals become aware of the availability of such services and as the effectiveness of treatment is further demonstrated. As a result, community-based agencies' resources are often stretched to their limits, but all agencies have a no decline policy as well as a sliding fee scale, which allows clients to pay an amount based on their financial circumstances. Thus, no township residents are turned away based on a lack of financial resources, including the instability of state funding for social services, which is becoming quite an issue. The Mental Health Board will continue to apply innovative strategies, not only to manage shrinking resources due to the implementation of property tax caps, but also to enhance the provision of services for underserved population. The further development of managed behavioral health care, as well as consolidation of human services on the state level, presents significant challenges to the Board in its effort to use local tax dollars efficiently. The Mental Health Board anticipates these challenges and continues its commitment to providing leadership, accountability, and the best mental health services possible to all residents of Riverside Township. We welcome your attendance at our Board meetings, which are held at the Township Call at seven PM on the third Wednesday of each month, nine times a year. Thank you very much for your support of our endeavors. I'd like to thank Supervisor Wilt and the Township Board for having us be a part of this. It has truly been a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Is there a motion to accept the report of the Mental Health Board?
So?
Tim Heilinbach? Is there a second?
Second.
Mary Robb?
Yes.
Mary Robb Clark, second. Any discussion? Steve?
I would just say that it's worth watching out, and it's information that's very relevant, that the Mental Health Board had an extensive review of its services and its future at no, real no cost to the Board or to the taxpayers because of the relationship of their consultants, and it was done at a very high level by a group of graduate students who were working very hard in this area. So I would commend the Mental Health Board for its energy and resources in doing that at very minimal cost.
Good point, yes. Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank the Mental Health Board for all their service because it really, really is an extremely important service that they provide to our community.
I think so. Becoming more so, I think, as time goes on. All right, anything else? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great, that stands approved. The next item on the agenda is to set the date for the next annual town meeting. By statute, the date must be the second Tuesday in April, which would be April nine of 2019. Statute also indicates that the meeting should not begin before six PM, as today's did not. Do I have a motion to set the date and time of the next annual meeting?
So?
Judy? Did you want?
Make a motion that the next annual meeting of Riverside Township be held on April ninth, 2019, at the hour of six oh one.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion? I'm sorry.
Second.
Fran Zickowitz? Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the next thing on the agenda is to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So?
Vera? And a second?
I second.
Marjorie Iniguez? Okay. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for being here and your input.